City of East Grand Forks, Tuesday, January 12th, 2021 is now 5:00 with City Minister. Please call roll.
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Olstad.
Here.
Council Vice President Tim Riepel.
Here.
Council Members Clarence Vedder.
Here.
Dale Helms.
Here.
Tim Johnson.
Here.
Mark Demers.
Present.
Brian Larson.
Here.
Does the term quorum number one update an East Grand Forks land use plan? Terry.
Thank you for giving me this time to kind of give you a little bit of an update. I'm going to share one of the, basically the packet that's there, that's in your packet. So we're, basically, we ended up hiring a consultant to help East Grand Forks do this land use plan. We're working through the components. It's, we've been working pretty hard kind of in this, in this middle area between the community background and the future land use needs. The, you know, we've, we've worked on, we've had a couple of steering committee meetings, and we're planning on doing an open house here pretty soon. And we will be looking for a lot of engagement from, from the public, and we need a lot of help getting that word out. We're going to ask our steering committee members to look on their partnerships to get out the word that we're, when we, when we do this kind of thing, as well as anything else that's happening on, any kind of other information we're needing. Currently, we have a Wiki map available on the website to get people's information, ideas, find out what's great about East Grand Forks, where we need some, where there's some issues or some problems that we can try and work out. And we've, we've had some feedback, not a whole lot, but we're going to push it a little further. When we do this, we're going to do this community survey pretty soon. We're still working on the final survey, but once we get that out, we'll do a lot more engagement, including a virtual open house. So basically, it'll be a lot of people like we are now, as well as able to put in, ask questions, put in information. They're going to try and make it as, as much of a two-way conversation as possible. Once again, we need the, the inform, we need to get that information out, and we will be letting people know about it as, as soon as we have everything together. The biggest thing we've been working on is, is we've got the community background, which is great, and that's kind of the starting point of everything. This land use plan, as well as for the reason why the MPO is involved, is our, is our metropolitan transportation plans. We need to know what the, how the city sees itself growing before we can start helping you guys figure out the transportation networks. So, you know, we're looking at the population, we're looking at age, the demographics, who's owning homes, things like that, what kind of vacancy rates, and, and just, just that basic information of what makes up this community. So we're looking at building permits, and the reason why we're looking at all these, these things is, is like, we know we're going to need single-family homes, we know we're going to need multiple-family homes, things like that, and we also need to know kind of where we're going to grow. So the population projections, we have put together several, and we're just, you know, we've, we've seen how we've grown in the past, you know, it's, through our permits, we see, we, you know, we're slowing down in how many single-family permits we, we have. We don't have a whole lot of multiple, multiple-family homes residential projects going on. So we don't predict, we aren't seeing anything in the past or, or anything today that says in the future we will be growing extraordinarily. So out of all of these issue, all, out of all of these, I, you know, percentages, is basically what we're trying to get to pick out, you know, how much growth we're going to have. And that's one of the, the main things that we would like you guys to answer, you know, help us answer is, is how fast are we going to grow? What do we want to see? What's a reasonable idea of what is going to be happening into the future? You know, that we have some vacant land out there that's being, that needs to be looked at, and, and just based on where everything is located, there's a lot of, there's some vacant area that, while it's not being built upon, some people are kind of, have ownership of that, and they're just sitting on it. But we're also preparing for future growth in, in our commercial, as well as our industrial We also have a river crossing that we need to kind of understand how that's going to affect any kind of growth in the city. You know, where, we, we need everybody's opinion basically on where everything is going to grow. Is it in the north, the south? Is there going to be anything in the east? Are we going to start growing that way? But basically, that's, that's the biggest question that we have right now, is that getting your, everyone's opinion on how much growth is really going to be there. Are we going to be working on that 7.75% growth rate? Or are we going to be doing something at a little higher growth rate of, you know, that 1.5%?
Nancy, do you have something?
Yes, if I could add something quickly. Planning Commission will meet on Thursday to discuss some of these population projections, where we expect our growth to be, where we'd like to see our growth. I would say just quick discussions on the bridge crossing, because that study will start in the upcoming months. And so what I, what I'm hoping to do is to get the opinions of our planning commission based on some of the information we have now, send it out to you as council in an email, and some of the comments or concerns that have been listed on the Wiki map up to this point, and then get it out and get your opinion. You can send it to me by email. It doesn't have to be anything super detailed or long, just any concerns or questions you have about the future land use plan, whether it be infill, empty commercial buildings, if we need growth in the industrial area where we think our residential growth will be, what type of concerns we have, does growth lead to traffic concerns, those types of things, but just kind of slimming it down, narrowing it to getting just some vital input from each one of you, and we can do it by email based on what the planning commission's recommendation are. So if you're okay with that, I'd, I'd like to be able to do that in the next week or two.
Sounds good, Nancy, thanks. Mr. Demers, you have something?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President. Just trying to remember back to the 2040 land use plan. Did we have actual census data that we incorporated into that one, or will that not, will we have actual census for 2020 data on this one?
As of right now, we don't have the final count for the 2020 census. We do kind of move back and forth. As soon as we get it, we can try and, if we can't put it in by the end of this particular plan, we will move it into some other, other, we'll update this, just the projections or the population until in the future when we have those things, just so that we're, when we, the MPO goes forward with their plans, there's a, a much better understanding of the population.
Okay. And then do we know what, you know, the last, the 2040, 2045, what we have for EGF projections? Or like a percentage?
With the percentage that we used in the 2045, it was a 0.09% annual growth rate that was used. And as we looked back on that, it was, it was pretty high. It was, it was a little high, so we're, you know, one of the things that the steering committee has, has suggested is going with something lower, like the 0.6 or 0.7%, so. But we'll, we'll like to get everybody's input on that as well, because that might not be planning commission's input, that might not be the council's input, so.
And, you know, obviously, I think Grand Forks is following us on, they're, they're kind of after us in this process, but do you have any sense of what they're going to be projecting?
Not at this time. They have literally just started their, their planning process. They just hired SRF to do their land use plan, and they're just, they're just getting started, kickoff meetings and things like that. So we're not, we have no idea right now where they're going to be looking at for their population growth.
So, and just back to that census stuff, do you know when, where you will be getting some final data?
They usually certify it, well, it was supposed to be certified in December of this year. They've pushed it to March now, even getting some preliminary numbers. I'm hoping that we can even get something from ACS that is predictive to the census sometime in late summer, August, September, fingers crossed. Right now, we're using the state demographers' numbers to try to accurately predict our growth as best we can, and they adjusted theirs based on the past census and then have appropriately adjusting them. So we're pretty close, I think, to what the state demographer has.
At the 8971?
Pardon me?
At the 8971 number?
Yes, yeah. So, and just to answer your question, I think Grand Forks last time went with like a one, somewhere between 1.2 to 1.4 growth rate for their city, which was what, when we, I think that was initially what we were looking at, and then that we lowered ours, and then I think they lowered theirs as well, so.
It'd be interesting to see how they're projecting and then how we track compared to them, and I think it's probably going to be somewhat in that ballpark as wherever, you know.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Mayor Gander.
Terry, could you go back to slide 14? I missed something. No, just kidding. That was a joke. I like the way you're doing this. I like the, the conversation that we're having. It's good for all of us to try to get our heads around some of this stuff. You know, it's too often you have a developer coming and saying, I want to use this parcel of land for this certain thing, and, and maybe we have to say, no, that doesn't work because it's not zoned for that. Well, how much better to get all the way around ahead of that whole process, starting with how do we want to use our land? And that carries over into zoning, and then that carries over into plating and the final uses of it. And, but I just encourage all of us, because, you know, we have all different categories of land use and different categories of zoning, and you might have all of one thing in the world that you need, but not enough of another. Hopefully, staff are on top of that, too, but we're, we can be the eyes and ears out there and listening. Maybe there's an employer that wants to grow in a certain area, but they're a little bit landlocked, so we can be that, that connection back into the process of getting that information in. When we talk about growth, you know, the other players that we should have at the table always, you know, from an employment standpoint, we should, and I'm sure you guys, you talked to the chamber, you talked to Paul Gordy of the EDA, that definitely plays into, into growth and population is having good jobs, and you never know what comes first. You know, if you have a lot of people here, you have an employer, employee pool that's ready for an employer to come in, but on the other hand, if you have an employer here, you can attract residents. So that can have, that kind of has to come up, you know, ratchets up. The schools like to plan, private developers, I'm sure you have a lot of conversations with them, you know, whatever their plans are, if someone's going to bring in, you know, 50 residential lots in the near future, that's going to bring some growth, particularly if they're doing it in an area where the natural growth is occurring. And so to have that dialogue with the, the private developers who can make this happen, you know, really supercharge it if they decide to do it. And then infrastructure, I know Jason would like us to build where we have lift stations and whatnot before we have to start extending all services out to the fringe. That's where our friend Henry Tweeton says, you know, river cities tend to grow north and south, and it's a very expensive way to grow because you have to carry utilities just in a line, and that's kind of expensive. But if you can grow in more of a square, maybe to the east a little bit, maybe that could be some more affordable growth, maybe even some affordable homes going in there. So I love this process. It really does help us to have a window to look forward at, you know, growth, and if we're strategic and, and ratchet it up, employment and schools and plating and all of that, it can happen pretty well. Again, paying attention to each category of, of development even as we go. Good job, thanks.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have anything? Brian?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would echo that. I'm really looking forward to this process, and I really do think that public participation is going to be essential here to the success and the overall impact of this effort. With some of the COVID impacts, we all know that there's a lot of people who aren't going to be as comfortable going to an open house as they would be were this a normal year or after we get through this. My question to the team would be, how are we adjusting this process to get the maximum amount of public participation while we're going through our pandemic?
Well, the, we will be doing online virtual meetings like this is right now. Being able to access the information online is always there, and we do have, you know, we encourage people to give us a call, whether it's Nancy or myself, as to if they're not understanding some part of the process, or they, they feel that they would rather talk to specifically somebody that they might be more familiar with. So that's the, that's the type of thing that we're going to have to work with because of COVID. We know that some people are very comfortable online, and, and that's really what we have right now, but we do understand that there are some people out there who aren't as comfortable, who, those are the people we really want to encourage to give us a call. You know, let us know what is, what their, their concerns are, so that we can get those concerns into our public participation. Just because it's not written in an email or, you know, or a letter, we have received letters in the past, too, so we're not going to eliminate something even as simple as writing a letter or giving a phone call. But we do need people to know about it.
The other option that we have moving forward is, we have the chamber, we have the downtown association involved. I've visited with the New American groups, and we have a school board member on stat or on our steering committee. I've spoke with the Senior Citizens Center. One of the options that I like to do, because I think it's more personal, is to meet with individual groups, where it's a smaller situation or something where we can get it out to that specific association, specific group, do smaller talks, very specific to them, getting their input on something that's very important to them. Transit riders, trying to think what other groups we have, ADA, those groups, seniors. So that is out and available. We've thrown that out to our steering committee. I'm more than willing and able to sit down with a realtor group, contractors, you name it. I'm available. It's not, it's not a difficult task, and I think it's easier to get the opinions of every different group because they have very specific needs that they want addressed or want answered. And so I think that would be also the route that we may have to go this year is a lot smaller groups, less of just an open format, whoever comes, you know, participates or whoever wants to call. Sometimes it's easier if I go to them. So that's my plan that I'm working with through the consulting group and the specific groups that we have in our steering committee.
Would it be possible to, I know not for every, like, say you have smaller ones, but let's say a larger virtual meeting, to utilize Channel 15 if people want to watch it, and maybe their questions will be answered and/or they might hear something and have some more input that maybe they can contact you by phone?
Yes, yeah, and, and that's a great option. In fact, that may be something that we should look into for our first public hearing, because we do work closely with Grand Forks. They're more than willing to help us with that public input media type of format, so.
Well, you can use our Channel 15.
Yeah, or that, too, yes.
As well as having that same recording available. I know you have it, you're, the Channel 15, you have the YouTube, as well as on the, on the website as well, so, to be able to access it multiple places.
Sure. Are you done? Sorry. Mr. Demers?
Thanks, I'm back. No, just to kind of, I was thinking the same thing as Mr. Larson here. Couple of thoughts I had that, so that I'm not repeating a bunch of things, but number one, that we could potentially use our East Grand Forks notification system, you know, to send out, we have texts and email notifications that we can send out to people that have signed up for it. Also, I was, you know, we have a, a local newspaper that is usually pretty generous with their space, they're always looking for content. I would suggest, I mean, we could put, you could put together, or work with them, I'm not going to volunteer their space for them, but usually they're looking for content, and I, yours, I'm always surprised, I'm not anymore, but that, how many people read the exponent and have, come with questions and follow-up or whatever? It's, it's usually a great spot to put, you know, some good content in there, you can usually put some maps or whatever in there, too. So I would, I would work with the exponent on a, you know, kind of ongoing basis. You could do three or four columns or something like that, so thank you.
Yes, thank you.
And we have, we have a lot of materials available, Mark, for Megan, so that doesn't involve a lot of work. We already have different comments and questionnaires and postings available for the website, for Facebook, for social media like EDA, for Twitter, so we've even kind of taken the work out of that, so it's just a matter of kind of getting that pushed out and moving forward, so.
Even with the notification system with the text, if you put a link in there, you can link it to your survey or questionnaire, too, so they make it easier.
Yep, yes.
So, anybody else have anything? I see none. Thanks, Terry.
Thank you.
Okay, move on. Number two, request to adjust the paid-on-call pay structure. Chief Bushy.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. So what I'm requesting here is a change to our current pay structure for our paid-on-call. Right now, our paid-on-call gets, are being paid $12 an hour, straight across the board, for emergency calls, for backfilling, short shifts, and for training. What I'm requesting is changing that a little bit and going to a two-hour minimum callback for emergency calls, and also to go to a shift differential where we would bump them up to $14 an hour when they're backfilling a shift. This would do a couple things, a couple goals in doing this would be to increase our response to emergency calls, going with the two-hour callback, hopefully, and also with the shift differential, I'm hoping to spread out the amount of hours each individual gets with those hours or those opportunities. Also, I, I look at this as a good incentive and kind of a, a pay-for-performance program. Our paid-on-call, I've not seen a pay increase since 2011, so I think this would be a good way to do something there and take care of a couple of my goals. I'm open for any questions, if anybody has any.
Anybody have any questions for Chief Bushy? Mr. Demers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess this isn't specifically for, for the chief, but looking at this, and to start out again, I, I am in favor of, of moving forward with this, but looking at the, the request, it does say that it's, it was in the budget. I'm trying to figure out when this was added. I, I looked back on the 12 eight minutes and, you know, the, the list that was given to us, as requested for, you know, any changes, and I didn't see that. So I guess, like I said, I'm not opposed to the, the policy, I just wanted to know when the policy was made.
Yes, I think I can answer that a little bit. A little bit of my background is, my proposal was included in the 812 packet, from my understanding, if that answers your question, Mr. Demers.
In the 812 packet, that was?
I believe, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Demers?
Nope.
Mr. Vedder?
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief, so when on-call respond to an emergency, what's the average time that they're working then?
Well, I can, I can answer, maybe this doesn't directly answer your question, but last year in 2020, when our total call volume, hours for our paid-on-call were 2,329 hours. Of that 2,329 hours, 199 hours were one-hour callbacks. And typically, what happens with our one-hour callback is when our on-duty staff is called out into the township area, we do what we call a shift call, and that brings in up to eight paid-on-call to cover the city while our crews are out in the world. And, yeah, does that answer your question, Mr. Vedder?
To a certain degree. Are we having a hard time getting on-call individuals to respond to requests?
Yes, I can look back at our calls and, you know, I would prefer to have three to four people in town at one time, but we've had calls where we've had only one person in town. And kind of the scenario that I, I like to talk about is, our, all of our guys have good hearts. They, they got into this business to help people out, but the fact remains that at, take a morning call at 2:00 in the morning, and it's zero degrees outside, and they get called in for a shift call, and they know it's going to be a medical out in the world. They're getting up at 2:00 in the morning, starting their cars, coming into the station, and within 45 minutes, they're sent home. I just feel that going to the two-hour callback would be a little bit more incentive to get them up and responding to that call.
Over the years, has our pool of on-call individuals shrank or stayed about the same?
We have always tried to maintain a roster of 35 people. Previously this year, I asked council to approve us keeping that number ongoing. Right now, we're at 19, or, excuse me, 29 total, so we're short six on our paid-on-call, and we did open the hiring process, but we did put it on hold during the COVID, height of the COVID, and I reopened that, and we are interviewing in January 21st here, trying to bring in more people, to get that number up to 25 paid-on-call.
I guess what, I think maybe what is, as far as what you've seen is the number of people that are, that are wanting to get into the on-call, is that dropping, increasing, or staying the same as far as when you go? or staying the same as far as when you go out for on-call?
Yeah, getting people interested in is, is a challenge. Across the state, it's a huge challenge. We're somewhat fortunate in that we have Grand Forks as a neighboring community. And our last application process, we received 16 applications. By the time it came down to our informational meeting, we were down to 11 interested applicants. After our informational meeting, it narrowed it down to, I believe, seven, once they found out really what it was all about. And then we put it on hold, and after the COVID thing, I'm down to four interviews. But typically, we get around that 15 applicants when we put out a call for paid-on-call applicants.
My feeling, if we haven't given them a raise since 2011, and I guess I'm not opposed to giving them a raise, I am a little leery of doing the, the minimum two-hour callback. I'd have to toss that run around a little bit.
Okay.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything for Chief?
One, one question. Would you please, because we'll get a little publicity here, Chief, about how many hours a year would a paid-on-call firefighter train? And what are the age requirements, minimum and maximum? Anything else you can say about, you know, the qualifications for being paid on-call? Thank you.
Yes, good question, Mayor. Minimum age is 18 years of age with a valid driver's license. And initially, our training for our paid-on-call, we're doing about 120 hours. And of that 120 hours initially, that is on the individual. That's a big commitment because we are training them to do the job. After that, we're looking at annually probably about, with training and calls, I don't have an exact figure, but we're looking at about 113 hours per person, and that includes emergency calls and training and a little bit of backfilling. It is, and then that doesn't go into the other required stuff that we're doing online now. We're really making use of the online training for our required training, our OSHA training. And that, right now, we're looking at probably about 10 hours a year that's required online. So it is quite a commitment.
What's your top age? Top age? How old?
Um, as long as you can pass the physical.
Pass the physical, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything right now? I see none, sir. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Number three, updated on the forgivable loan program and Polk County grant program. Mr. Gordy?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. First thing I'd like to inform the ED, the City Council is that Josh Grinney was today elected president of the EDA. So we will be moving forward under Mr. Grinney's leadership this year, or the next two years. The EDA approved participating in the county program. When the state approved its $216 million assistance program, there were money set aside for direct payments to restaurants and bars. There were programs in favor of the theaters and convention centers and places like that. And then there was money also set aside, given to the counties for businesses that did not qualify, for the monies to be given to restaurants and bars, and for places such as hotels that have convention centers that don't fall under the convention center criteria within the state, the other portions of the state statute. The proportion that was allocated to Polk County was approximately 622,000. Polk County has set aside $200,000 for use in favor of East Grand Forks businesses. Today, the EDA approved criteria that the highest priority businesses receiving those funds would be businesses not eligible for direct state payments and other businesses that have slipped through the cracks. The committee identified three restaurants, two transportation businesses, and three hospitality businesses in this highest priority. Funds not identified for the prioritized businesses would then be available to other retail, travel, restaurant, service, and hospitality businesses. All applicants must submit a profit and loss statement for 2019 and 2020 to determine the relative impact, and they would be reviewed in a manner similar to the way the CARES Act applications were received. So we'll be posting this on the website within a day or so, so that that can, so that businesses can apply. The deadline for applying for that is January 29th. So are there questions on that part, on that part?
I have one. For the county dollars that came through the state, what are their criteria? We know, what are, what constraints are we given, or do we have pretty wide latitude on that county money?
There were no constraints put on the county. The monies that went to the counties, we are actually trying to focus it on those where the impact was the greatest. That's what the EDA decided to do.
On the county money, those are dollars?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
On the county money, those are dollars that are grant dollars, and the county controls who gets that money, correct?
The county will make the ultimate decision on those.
Right.
They have told us that they will be accepting our recommendations, and those are grant dollars, not loan dollars.
Right.
Mr. Demers?
Thank you, Mr. President. If the 29th is the target date, what's the anticipated dispersal date?
The EDA, the Loan Committee, the EDA will get together the following week to go through the applications that, for the city allocation. It will go to the EDA on February 9th. The committee at the county level consists of the Administrator in Foston, the Economic Development Director in Crookston, myself, and the county administrator. We will meet on February 11th. It will go to the county, on county board on February 16th for approval and dispersal immediately thereafter.
And then, I guess, the only other question I have is, is all the outreach that's being done to make sure that people are aware of these programs, is it just through the website, or is there another avenue or other avenues?
It will be a combination of website and direct outreach to businesses that have been identified. When we went through the county CARES Act, we did the CARES Act dollars that were available at the county level. We did a similar process, reaching out directly to businesses, and will also, we will be putting the information also on the EDA Facebook page.
Anybody else have any questions on that portion?
Get it out.
Want to move on to the next one, Gordy?
The Loan Committee is, was concerned about how the, how to fit all the programs together. There are actually about five programs going on right now, and wanted to take a few days to work with the forgivable loan program. At today's meeting, the EDA decided that what they would do is have the Loan Committee meet on Thursday to iron out all the details of the city program. It will also meet next Tuesday in special session, and it will set a deadline a couple of days after the grant program, because we believe that some of the businesses may decide that they want to apply for the grant, and when they find out what the grant of money, grant amount of money that they will be getting or recommended for, that they may want to actually change or increase their request for the loan from the city, because the EDA was very concerned about making sure that this could be used in the most effective and strategic way. Mr. Helms, do you have anything to add perhaps?
Well, I think you kind of hit it on the nose there. The reason, the biggest reason why, the biggest reason why that it didn't get done earlier, and, and, and we tabled it when we did, because when the, when the council decided to commit the money before the holidays, nobody wanted to, you know, it was so close to holidays, we couldn't get everybody to get together to meet, to get anything accomplished then. And so we kind of just delayed it until, like, like Mr. Gordy said, our meeting today, and then come up with a plan. Not that we were trying to do anything different, it's just that I know for myself, and I, I asked here at the last council meeting, you know, all these executive orders and everything out there, you know, to understand every one of them and what's going on, and then try to run them all together on different loans and everything, was really difficult to keep track of and to keep everybody, so we can get everybody, hopefully get everybody covered. And that was our whole plan behind it, was so that we can get everybody covered, that's, that's probably going to need it. And then the other problem I run into was asking, I talked to a couple, three restaurant owners. Most of them have said that with the guidelines, depending on what they are, but the guideline has been put out there that it would be, you know, it could be up to a five-year loan thing, personal guarantee. Most of the people I talked to said they weren't interested in doing that, because nobody right now can guarantee how long they're going to be here. I know everybody's in good faith, wants to stay, wants to be here, but it just depends on what happens down the road. So that's why we kind of pushed the county one ahead of the city one, because being it's a grant and not a loan, we figured it might do more good for some of them than the loan would. So we're going to get the loan prepared on Thursday, as Mr. Gordy said. We're going to meet Tuesday with the, with the guidelines and have them ready, get, hopefully those will get approved on Tuesday, and then to have the meeting, I don't know if that's coming to the meeting for approval there or not, or?
It'll be at the EDA for the approval, and then we can post it.
Okay, so we don't need to bring it to the council meeting, I guess is what I was getting at. So, and then we can post it, and hopefully we can keep moving on it. So I just, again, want to thank the city and the council for, for putting that money in there, and hoping that you will understand and that, you know, we just need a little time to get everything put together and do it proper. So, but we are working on it now again. So, that's all I can, all I got.
The only other thing I would add to that is that we will make sure the council gets information regarding the criteria. And that's the criteria for eligibility, and it's the criteria for forgiveness.
So, Mr. Gordy, you're telling me that by next Tuesday's meeting, you're going to have the criteria put together for the forgivable loan program?
I'm saying that the EDA will vote, I will review, and I anticipate vote on criteria next Tuesday. Yes, sir.
Okay. One of the things I want to say about this, I did watch the meeting today, and I want to thank a couple of the EDA members for keep pushing this forward to make sure that the recommendation that came forth and not doing something right away, and then waiting 30 days, and then having to wait another 30 days, maybe to get everything rolling, and with the comments today, I want to, you know, you know, say, was I anticipating this to move forward today at the meeting? No, I did not, because of what was coming out of the Loan Committee. And I think we need to do what we need to do to make sure this money gets sent out and helps out who can be helped. The conversation that happened today regarding people that get to start up with their businesses yesterday, and making sure that they have enough money to make sure they have their orders in and the food come in, so they can keep moving forward and making sure they can make payroll. You know, like I said, we don't know when the PPP stuff's going to be coming rolling back out for the money being dispersed. That's going to take a while. Sounds like maybe starting Wednesday, the banks are going to be able to take applications, or it might be next week. We don't know yet for sure, unless it came out later today. I think we need, don't need to be, can't be shortsighted in how many people are going to apply for this. Even if it's five, maybe it's 10, maybe it's 15, maybe it's 20, and the number doesn't matter. It matters that we can help who we can help. I want to make sure that everybody knows that we didn't do this lightheartedly to take the money, the 260, and allow it to be sent out to the businesses, because we knew it was the citizens' money, but we thought we should do something. And I hope that the EDA takes that and comes back Tuesday with the parameters and moves it forward and keeps moving forward. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Gordy, with the meetings that the EDA has in place this week and early next week, I would like to ask you for your, your best estimate on a, a date, or potentially a range of dates, when our businesses could possibly see the dispersment of the $260,000 in question.
Since we need to give them an opportunity to evaluate the impact of the county's program and make sure that we don't miss somebody, what we're looking at, what we talked about today, was the, we will have those names on approximately February 9th, allow them to apply through February 12th, and the money should be going out as quickly thereafter as possible. It will take, it takes some time, because it's a loan program for forgiveness, and there are certain documents on here that will take some time to prepare, but that's, we'll be working expeditiously to get it done as quickly as possible at that time. And Mr. Galstead can explain further about the time and the documents that have to be prepared to make this possible.
I don't know if he's on, but I probably can't hear you.
Ron, you might be muted.
I'm sorry, I just was disturbed, but I'm thinking that the earliest, if we're looking, well, if you're looking at potentially drafting the guidelines on Thursday, going back to the EDA on the 19th, having some type of a application period, and then going forth, the earliest would be the beginning of March, because we would have to draft up the documents, set up closing times, and disperse the funds. So it'd be sometime the beginning of March, earliest, in my estimation, if that's what Paul was asking me.
Mayor Gander?
So, I think everybody knows that through this process, I am a little disappointed about the lag and the delay that's taken place. I'm not, I'm not pleased with that. Now, I will say that I have full faith and trust in our EDA board and our EDA staff. Most of them I either appointed or reappointed, and I have high confidence in our City Council representation to the EDA board. If they hit some sort of blockade or stone wall that didn't let it go forward, I respect that. Lord knows that leadership is a challenging effort, and until you're right there, immersed in the middle of it, say on the EDA, on the Loan Committee, or whatever it might be, it's really hard to know, you know, just how difficult that would have been to move. So again, I'm going to give the, the most powerful affirmation that I can, and high confidence in the EDA board and the EDA staff. These are good people, and, and certainly in many ways more qualified than, than I am. I'll just say it like that. Everybody on that board has some high qualifications to be there. But there is one way, but, did I say but? There is one way where this does not have to ride along with the state-county grant dollars. And, and the reason is, if somebody really has an immediate need for money, if we could get this built and finalized and applied for and dispersed any sooner, and then if they get some grant dollars, they could take this out, they could pay it off with grant dollars in the future. There's no reason to wait for a grant program to come to full fruition before you decide if you're going to apply for a forgivable loan. This can zoom ahead if it wants to, if there are no other obstacles. So they don't really have to be coordinated. I do believe the need for money, we, we're starting to see some folks starting to teeter a little bit, and the need for cash is, is great. And whoever said, you know, buying all the groceries to get back going again and starting to make payroll. to make payroll, it's real money when you start to reconstitute your business after a shutdown, a lot of front-end costs. So if there is a way, and again, I have tremendous respect for the EDA board, I've said that now 11 times, if there is a way to move this ahead of the county grant program, and even if it has to be taken out in a month or two with dollars from a grant program, they pay this back, so be it. But I don't know that they would do that, because really, depending on how you all structure it, I've heard that you could potentially, not that this is going to happen, it could be in six months, half of it could be forgiven. So if they're still with us in six months, maybe half of it could be forgiven, and then the remainder over the rest of a five-year period. And so there's a way for this to turn into a nice windfall for the businesses, and they need it, and still an effort to preserve them and keep them viable to that five-year period for full forgiveness. So that would be my challenge, if there's a way to let this program move ahead of the county grant program, I see, if I'm that business, I'm jumping on this. And please know in good faith, we want to forgive these loans. That's a good faith effort by us. We want to forgive these loans. We want you still here, month by month, year by year, and we're not trying to trick anybody and say, oh, you got to pay. No, there's none of that. It's only a forgivable loan program, because it has to be by law. Okay, there, I'm done.
Mr. Nemers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I feel like I might be piling on a little bit here, but I do feel passionate about this. Obviously, I spoke at length about it before the holiday, and obviously, we as a council need to give this money free of attachment to EDA. So for general purpose and direction and how it was administered, we don't have, once we give it, we have to give it our blessing. But the purpose of this money was to get into the hands of those people that needed it quicker now. March isn't acceptable. This, it appears that these are man-made obstacles, that we're, like the mayor said, I mean, there doesn't appear to be any reason why you have to have a five-year forgivable loan program that trails off. I mean, the city, when we voted to do this, and I know, I was willing to give more, and I know the people that voted on this did it with a lot of trepidatude. I mean, it was trepidation. I mean, it was, it's a hard vote for people. But we did it knowing that we didn't expect it back. This is money that isn't coming back to the city of East Grand Forks. We don't expect it back. Get it in these people's hands now, or we'll remember it when it comes budget time next year. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything at this time? Mr. Helms?
Thank you, Mr. President. I can assure you as the EDA that the guidelines, we're pretty close on the guidelines already. We had done some of that preliminary stuff. About the only thing we have left is to determine the length, the percentage, and the personal guarantee. So I'm pretty confident that we'll get that all done on Thursday, and that we can have that all ready to go out on Tuesday. But you talked about getting it to them quickly. I remember very well that I was one of the people that spoke about this before we ever started this whole thing, that these people need this money now, okay? Well, I can tell you this much, that once we do our job on Thursday, it's out of our hands. We can't do anything about it. It's all the legal stuff that has to go through to get it done, and we all know when the legal process starts, it's not quick, no matter how fast we'd like to do it. We had to tie all these different things to these loans, everything had to be done the proper way. You can't just go out and hand them a check. I said that today at the EDA meeting. It would have been nice if we could just got a check from the city and said, here you go, folks, make it work. It don't work that way. I know everybody's concerned. We've, I think we've worked pretty hard on the EDA and the Loan Committee. We spent two and a half hours that day working on all this stuff. So we didn't just kick it out to the side and do things. We tried to get everything done properly and getting ready to go. So I can pretty much guarantee you that Thursday night, it'll be ready for Tuesday to start the process. What happens after that, that would be up to, it's my understanding that our city attorney has to check with another one to see, for us to find out the guidelines of how, what terms we can go with, because there's going to be some stipulations there from higher up. I don't know where, I don't remember who that attorney was or whatever, but there's going to be some stipulations there on how many years we can go, so we got to work with that. There's a lot of things we have to do to make it done right and transparent, so we don't have our same issues we've had in the past. But thank you for giving us the time to do it.
Mr. Galstead?
I just want to reiterate that though the Loan Committee did, in fact, discuss these issues for two and a half hours, though they might not have come to the same understanding and agreement that was the recommendations of the city council, their discussion and decision to delay the $260,000 was very well reasoned and logical, and had no intention to create any type of heartache or animosity. And they're working diligently to do it. As Mr. Helms has indicated, there are some legal, there are some legal hoops that need to be jumped through, and the fact that from the date that the city of East Grand Forks granted the money to the EDA, there was already about a two-week timeframe that was delayed due to the holiday season, and therefore, some of the expediency had dissipated in light of the fact that there was other monies that actually went out today to the restaurants, the loan program that they had availability to get 1% loan money, as well as the money that's coming from the grant to the county. So all of those programs, plus the PPP monies that are going to be available now, again through the federal government, were all considered in the decision and their discussion. So it wasn't done lightly, and it was very well reasoned. Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments at this time, or questions for Mr. Gordy? I see none. Entertained a motion to adjourn. Ooh, by Helms. Second by Nemers. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Pose, same sign. Motion is carried, means adjourned.